I'd like to call the River County High School Board of Education meeting to order. Did you call roll please?
Mrs. Staub?
Here.
Mrs. Nail?
Here.
Mr. Fiskin?
Here.
Mr. Henning? Mrs. Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Doug? Ms. Frehberg?
We have a corner, would you skip a bunch of lesions please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any agenda changes?
Uh, we do. Uh, we had two bills that came in late. A monthly invoice from OPA for $25,308 in success. An invoice from Island Design that constructed and built the forward skirt. And that's for $1,327. So I'd like those included with the consent agenda.
Public comments? Do we have any public comments?
Hi, I'm Kevin. Uh, this remains seated. And I'll try to keep them open. Dennis Osmond, Frehberg. The last time I left, I left in a hump and I didn't want that to be the way that I departed. There's so many people on the board that I truly care for and have the utmost respect. And starting with the administrators, Mrs. Crabb, Mr. Young, John, and Mr. Frehberg. I certainly appreciate all your work that you do for the school and we're lucky to have each and every one of you. It has been an absolute pleasure to serve with you all on the board. Dean and Gary are here. Dean, 10 years and Gary, eight years. And Michelle and everyone else on the board. I think you all do a fantastic job. My reasoning behind resigning and putting in a resignation letter is, I alluded to, Michelle is, I think actions have consequences. And so for me, coming to where I come from, I led Marines for 20 years and I flew with Delta Airlines as a captain. And I took it as not a winning or losing vote so much as a lack of confidence in my leadership. And so for me, that was enough. And it may have been emotions. I alluded that that's what I was going to do. And so I put it in and I left. That's, I was about halfway to Reichschnyders when I told myself, you know, you really shouldn't make emotional decisions. And so I texted Jeff or texted Greg, I figured he'd be a good contact, and said, hey, give me some time to sleep on this and I'll get back with you on that. You can't do anything anyway until it's on the agenda and the board has a chance to accept my letter of resignation. I was wrong on both accounts, as it turns out. Friday morning, I gave Greg a call and he said, hey, I can't talk to you. Something to, and correct me if I'm wrong, something to the effect, on the vice counsel, you need to talk to Vicki. And so I left a message for Vicki and she gave me a call back. And I said, hey, I thought about it. I need to slice on a little pie. Dean handled it differently. Doug handled it differently. And I think, I think I can serve my remaining two years on the board. And she said, well, actually you can't. According to Board Policy 2-70, your resignation letter was filed with the Board Secretary. Yesterday, the 27th, and you're now off the board. So I said, okay, fine. So I did make an attempt. Like I said, actions have ramifications. So if I didn't want to accept being off the board, I shouldn't have written the resignation letter. So there's no hard feelings there. If it was Greg, I can't stay mad at Greg. I consider him a friend. And I know everything he does. He does for the better of this school. So if it's avoiding a nasty thing in the paper or a situation like this 70, whatever the motivation was, it, I can't stay mad at him. So I know, I know he's got the school's best interests always in heart. If it was Vicki, then I'm not surprised. So it is what it is. But I've enjoyed being on this board. I do think I probably deserved a little better or more consideration than the way it played out. But that's the way it goes. So I thank you. I, I'm proud of the contributions I've made in the board and what we were able to accomplish a lot of tiers. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Have good luck.
Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, let's move to the approved consent agenda. Anybody have any questions, comments? Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So good. Second.
Moved by Mrs. Nail, second by Mrs. Morgan.
Mrs. Staub?
Aye.
Mrs. Nail?
Aye.
Mr. Fiskin?
Aye.
Mr. Henning?
Aye.
Mrs. Morgan?
Aye.
Motion passes. Any committee reports?
None.
Student member report. She is not here, so is anyone else going to report? No? All right. Principals report.
Okay. So I have some news to wrap up this year here for you. And there's also a report that you can look at. But at the end of the year, I always like to, in this meeting, talk about the teachers that have reached their educational achievements for the year. So completing degrees and recognitions this year, we had Mrs. Jamie Bonzel in our resource department. She completed her Director of Special Education endorsement from the University of St. Francis. Mrs. Carrie Lauer completed her National Award Certification in Mathematics in December. And then Mrs. Erica Ruiz just completed her Master of Science in Education in Diversity and Equity Education from Southern Illinois University of Evansville. So congratulations to all three of those teachers. They've taken classes at night and write papers on the weekend and still coming here every day. And I'm just very proud of them and the outstanding job they did. So super happy for them. Some student news. Congratulations to our new student board member, Mrs. T. Scheigel, who will be joining us in July. Izzy has been selected by the Juvenile Diabetes Research Foundation, or JDRF, to represent the State of Illinois as a delegate for the 2023 Children's Congress in Washington DC this summer. Izzy will be working to increase the partnership between the JDRF and our national government to support type one diabetes and a research path to healthcare and potential cures. I also included a letter of advocacy for this and this is a massive honor. And she's worked a lot. If you get to know her on the board, she's done a lot of trying to work with our Illinois State Congress in juvenile research for diabetes. And I'm very excited for this opportunity for her and very proud that she'll be representing herself and our community. So good luck to Izzy. The Chick-fil-A leader hit that kickback at an eventless held on the 22nd at the Outdoor Athletic Facility. Spring does not always cooperate, so, but we made it through without the rain, but it was one cold day. But those kids play kickball. They had a great time. We had a lot of people out, in and out. When that coffee truck showed up, there was a mad dash for the coffee truck. But it was a really just fantastic day for our community, our school, and for these families. We also did kickball tournaments, Simon Auction, food trucks, FFA petting zoo, cornhole tournament and bake sale. And the event raised just over $12,000 to support our family. So just really outstanding. The article of pictures should be in the paper next week. Big thank you goes out to all of our local businesses, the individual donors, school organizations and support teams, Mr. John Blaski and the Frehberg FFA, Mr. Fuld, the Industrial Arts Club, and countless volunteers that make this possible. This is truly a, an example of why this community and this school and everyone around it is just a great place to be. Thank you to the Chick-fil-A leader team, students, and counselors. AP testing, so along with honors banquet and SAT and graduation and prom. It has been, it's been a spring in the last month with all of this. On top of that, we had AP testing for a week. The state sets the dates on that. So this was all pretty much the week before graduation. Five students took calculus, two took the English Language Composition, one took economics. Forty-eight took the government, 22 psychology, and 42 in US history. So we had a lot of students taking tests. I think we had one student that took four of those tests.
I was on that line.
Thank you to Ann Meider and John Young. This is a major undertaking to get all of these tests in. And hopefully the students have a very happy result when they open those envelopes when their results arrive or email, however they get those. Couple end of the year wrap up exams for interclass students. Those will take place next week on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. We also have promo collections. Mr. Alt is going to be super busy. And then the teachers' last day is next Friday and I hope they all have a wonderful rest of the summer. And we'll do this again in the fall.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Jung? Superintendent's report.
All right, we've got, just to remind everybody, we've got an upcoming building and grounds meeting on Monday, the 22nd. It's at 7:00 PM. We're planning on taking a tour of the Dressler property. Jason Dressler has volunteered to give us a tour of the property to kind of point out a lot more information about it than I know. Construction wise, the, everything's moving forward. And we talk a lot about how our administration works together. And so today was a perfect example. I, I had pretty much everything planned and thought I had everything planned and Mrs. Jung said, hey, you got a second? And just normally walks in and is like, all right, don't be mad if I get it. She just, she had a great plan of how to really get everything moved next week. And sat down and talked about it. And she had basically the overview of the plan. And then together, we kind of put our heads together and got all the details worked out. So our industrial arts teachers, the band teacher, and the family consumer science teacher, we're actually going to get subs for them during finals so that they can be around to help move the items out of their classrooms. The family consumer science room, they're going to be in to abate the asbestos on the 30th. So everything has to be out of there by next Friday. The industrial arts, there's a lot of equipment. There really isn't a lot of places to put the equipment. We originally talked about sliding all the equipment to the center of the room and then having the trades come in and work around the equipment. The more we got discussions with Petker and that team, we felt like we needed to find a place to move that out. So what I've done is I've actually secured some containers that we're going to bring in and put in the parking lots. This is Crunk met with all the students that are in those parking spots. We luckily have the seniors gone, so we have the senior lot available. So we're going to move all those kids to the senior lot and have these room for those containers. Then next Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, I believe Petker is going to loan us a large, either a skid steer or a forklift to move most of the machinery that's on pallets already. And that way we can get all that equipment out. We feel like that's going to really increase the productivity of the contractors in the building when they have to do all the electrical and then tear the walls down between the different industrial arts classes. So I think you'll be impressed once we take our tour on Monday about all the work that's been done. But it's coming together and again, Mr. Crunk and Mrs. Jung always there to, you know, straighten me out. Triple I Conference is in November, November 16th to the 19th. This is when we talk about it for those that are interested in attending. We can start registering on June 5th. What we like to do is register early so that we can get into the Hyatt, which is where the conference is held. Makes it a lot more convenient for everybody to just be in the rooms and go down to the conference. If you are interested in attending, please let Kendra know by the first so that we can make reservations when they are available. Graduation again went extremely well. Mrs. Jung and Mrs. Nowacki spent quite a bit of time organizing and putting things in place. They had both the outside and the inside set to go. Unfortunately, Mother Nature worked against us. We made a call. It's always tough to make those weather calls, especially when you're going to have how many people, 1,500, 1,800 people attend the graduation ceremony. But we made the right call. For those that pay attention to Twitter, as I do, I like to, you know, see what other schools are doing. One of our conference schools tweeted out that so proud of their, their seniors that they graduated and the total amount of scholarships that they earned was somewhere between 750,000 and 800,000. Those that attended graduation, Mrs. Meider mentioned that our, our students earn 3.9 million dollars in scholarships. So that is unbelievably fantastic. And it's just a testament to pretty much everybody that's involved with our school, including the kids and the parents and the teachers and the counselors. And that is not a one-year phenomenon. We regularly, our kids earn greatly over $3 million in scholarships each year. And that's just fantastic. So that's something I'm really proud about. Summer school, we're going to try a little bit different in summer school. So typically what we do is we have a math and English credit recovery class. Typically it lasts between three weeks, around three weeks, two hours a day for each class. As with anything, we struggle quite often to find an instructor that wants to come in. We charge $150 because of the cost to the district for each student to take the class. The Mrs. Meider came in and talked with Mrs. Jung. There's a program called Edgisher. I'm not sure if I pronounced that right. It is a virtual credit recovery program. They will only charge the student $100. It is accredited, accredited. So, so we can't accept the credits that the students earn there. So the students will actually register, Mr. and Mrs., Mrs. Meider and Mr. Young have already been in contact with the students that are in a position that need credit recovery and given them the information. So we're hoping that this is kind of how we're going to move forward in the future. Students have a beginning date that they can start working on the classes. They have an end date. There are online instructors. There's online tutoring services that they can contact if they struggle with the material. So this is something that we made a decision to move forward with. I think it's going to be good for the school. It could lead to some other online classes, things possibly that we don't offer. So this is something that, you know, this is kind of the future. So we're going to try it. I think it's going to help out, especially those kids that need some help. And it's about 50 bucks a class cheaper for the family. So I feel like that's a win-win for them. And that's all I have.
Does anyone have any questions? All right, old business?
Uh, there is none.
All right, new business?
Uh, the first is to, we need to rescind the motion to appoint a board member. When we did interviews, we, the board selected a person. Being on the board, when I contacted that person, they were also actually interviewing for another district and they took that one. So we need to actually take the steps to rescind the motion to approve that person.
All right, so we need a motion to rescind the, we need to move to rescind the motion to approve. Kendra Meath to fill the vacant board seat. Motion made by Mr. Henning?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Morgan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
So now it's appropriate for us to approve the new board member. Mr. John, who's by Jay's family, is somebody that also we interviewed that the board felt was a quality candidate. Not unlike the rest of candidates, we had five quality people that were interested. Yes. We are in need to have him approved and then once he takes a seat, this is, help him recite the.
Okay.
Something.
Both of us.
Thank you.
All right. I need someone to make a motion to appoint Mr. John Jace Bailey as board member to fill the vacant board seat. Motion by Mr. Henning?
Second.
Oh, sorry. I lost your last name?
Kiss. Kiss.
Kiss.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Well, well, board, you may take your seat next to Mr. Henning. Actually, I understand.
And you, you have a copy of this in your board packet so you don't have to remember.
Repeat after me. I, Jay Spanley.
Aye, Jay Spanley.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education for Frehberg Community High School District 77.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education for Frehberg Community High School District 77.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
In accordance with the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
And the laws of the State of Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I further swear that.
I further swear that.
I shall respect taxpayers' interests.
I shall respect taxpayer interests.
By serving as a faithful protector.
By serving as a faithful protector.
Of the school district's assets.
Of the school district's assets.
I shall encourage and respect.
I shall encourage and respect.
The free expression of opinion.
The free expression of opinion.
By my fellow board members.
By my fellow board members.
And others who seek a hearing before the board.
Others who seek a, others who seek a hearing before the board.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
While respecting the privacy of students and employees.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority.
I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority.
As an individual.
As an individual.
And that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
And that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting.
And I shall abide by majority decisions of the board.
And I shall abide by the majority decisions of the board.
While restraining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
While restraining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
Okay, item C.
Uh, this is a step that we need to take. When we sold the bonds last fall to raise money for the construction project, those, that money went into the bond and interest fund. In order to spend the money on the project, we have to move the money into capital projects. So this resolution that was in your board packet is a resolution to move that money, which was $5.3 million, from the bond and interest fund to the capital projects fund so that it can be used for the construction project.
Does anyone have any questions, comments?
No.
Okay, I need a motion to, to approve the resolution.
Right.
So good. Motion by Mrs. Nail?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Morgan. Need your roll call.
Mrs. Staub?
Aye.
Mrs. Nail?
Aye.
Mr. Fiskin?
Aye.
Mr. Henning?
Aye.
Mr. Spanley?
Aye.
Mrs. Morgan?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item D.
Uh, this is the time of the year that we take a look at the student fees for next year. You do have a copy of that in your folders at your desk. What I've shown in that is last year's fees compared to what we're looking for for this year's fees. And then any of the changes were highlighted in yellow and the rationale for the changes. So on the top portion of this is just the classes. So digital literacy, we're asking for just a small increase in the fee. With Mr. Alt teaching that, he's using a lot of robotics that uses a lot of batteries. So this $10 a year fee will help cover the battery and any other supplies in the room. FFA, that fee is actually dropping for $14.5. The state has changed and they are actually covering the fee, membership fee in the FFA. So we're going to take that out. And then the $5 covers any other consumables that are in that class. Intro to Family Consumer Science, that, we're asking that fee to be increased by $10 a semester. And that is due specifically to the rising cost in food because that's a, a class they do a lot of cooking in. The Small Engines Class, we're asking for an increase from $20 a semester to $30 a semester. And again, that is for the increased cost in auto supplies. Sports Marketing is a brand new class. We're asking for that fee to be set at $25 a semester. That is all the different consumables. They do a lot of hands-on activities in that class. And then they also, we're buying a new program that the students will use in that class. And then we're eliminating library fines. What we've made the decision to do is no longer charge for library fines per day. It became kind of redundant. And so what we're doing is if students don't turn the books back within a certain amount of time, we're just charging the kids a book instead of charging them per day. We're hoping that that's going to help, uh, help the kids to bring their books back. Then on the bottom, I have made some suggestion on increases. This is something that we've talked about a little bit in previous board meetings. These are all annual passes for both, goal passes are for 60 and plus, adult passes, student passes, the individual gain passes. That price was actually set by the board and follows the conference increases and then the family passes. So these are things that they have been at price for quite a long time. If you look at the individual, so for, for the, at the bottom, the family passes were $100 a year. I'm proposing that they go up to $150 a year, but at $5 an event. So I mean, it doesn't take long to get to 150 and if it's a family pass, then you've got, everybody's a family. So it's still a, a great deal. I mean, encourage people to buy those family passes. But the cost of officials has gone up and, you know, anything, we really have to be able to try to help cover that. I think the, the goal pass at $20 goes to $30. Again, I do not think these are huge burdens. And I think the people that come to these would have to pay them. And we do get quite a few people that buy these passes. So I still think it's a good, good deal for the price that we're proposing. But I'm open to suggestions from the board if they feel that's too high or not high enough or however you'd like to handle that.
Does the MABC still promote that as well?
I believe they cover, for the directors, they did a family pass. I believe that's how it works, yes.
Yes, a lot of few times meetings they get a family pass.
It's just the directors.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
So I just didn't know. I don't know. I've been to the MABC meetings and I haven't. Yeah, when I was on, when I was a secretary. And they're like, you get a check, they're like, hey.
Hold it. Three meetings.
Yeah, they attend three meetings and then you get your, I didn't have a check back or whatever. So I just don't know.
We always get, I guess, the conference for passes for that.
Oh, for the board.
For the board, yeah. In the, any school event within the conference, if you go, let's say to the Central, someplace like that. Sure, that would be it. That's, that's good for everyone. How many family passes do we have sold?
Oh boy, a lot. Family passes per year, it's probably between 50 to 60.
That's been one of the numbers, huh?
Yeah. That's cool.
Well, and I thought the goal pass, because I thought, uh-huh, the goal.
Well, and I thought the goal pass, because I thought, uh-huh, the goal pass last year, because she came to all the football games and the basketball games, and like, I thought $20 was really cheap, you know, because she could have came to volleyball, too, you know, you think about, you know, we have a lot of kids that do multiple sports, so that can save you a huge savings.
Any other questions, suggestions, how do we feel about the fees, with the increases? Well, then I need a motion to approve the student fees for 2023, 2024 as presented. Motion by Mrs. Nail?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kiskin? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Dob?
Aye.
Mrs. Nail?
Aye.
Mr. Kiskin?
Aye.
Mr. Henning?
Aye.
Mr. Spanley?
Aye.
Mrs. Morgan?
Aye.
Motion passes, we approve first reading of the amended FY '23 budget.
This is the annual business where we have the board approve the amended budget. The reason we have, we are amending the budget is because things pop up throughout the school year that were not in the original budget, and so it helps Diane if we put everything in line, and then when we finish the year, that's what we, you know, we actually finish the year at. There is a copy in your folder that shows what is done and the reasons why. The, the big reasons why the budget has been amended. One of the things that I think it's important to look at is on that first sheet that has the original budget, and then the second, that has the amended budget down at the bottom. It kind of shows you a difference of what we had put in the original budget as opposed to what was in the amended budget. And if you go across the Ed Fund, it looks like we're about $23,000 less than we anticipated, but we're still well over 5.4 million dollars that we're going to end in the Ed Fund, which is incredibly healthy. Building and grounds, that change is almost exclusively due to the construction. Why that number is where it's at. Bond and interest, again, you guys just made a motion to move 5.3 million, so that's why that number is so out of whack. The transportation, again, anytime we're within about $20 or $30, like, that's a, that's a pretty good a pretty good number to be at, especially when we're looking at about a eight or nine million dollar budget. And again, capital projects looks crazy, but you go over working cash, tort, and health life safety, those are all in a, in really good shape. Down at the bottom, she explains why we made the adjustments that we made. So this is just the first reading. If there's questions that anybody has, they, you know, I will absolutely take those back and we'll get answers for you. But there is a second reading, and we'll have to hold a hearing as well in June for the amended budget.
We're still looking, any questions? Alright, I need a motion to approve the first reading, the amended FY '23 budget.
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Henning?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Morgan?
Mrs. Dob?
Aye.
Mrs. Nail?
Aye.
Mr. Kiskin?
Aye.
Mr. Henning?
Aye.
Mr. Spanley?
Aye.
Mrs. Morgan?
Aye.
Motion passes, we appoint Bass Governing Board as a new.
Each district that's a member of Bass has a board member that serves as, serves on their governing board. This is a group that meets, I believe, quarterly, this is monthly.
No, it's one a quarter.
Quarterly. Mrs. Dob has served on this for the last couple of years. The board member attends a meeting, they go over all the different recommendations that are made at the executive board level, which is, which I'm on. And so we need somebody to either volunteer, or somebody nominate somebody. I believe Mrs. Dob is interested in passing that course on, if anybody's interested.
I've done it for six years, it's, it's really nice to be able to know what's going on with Bass and what the executive board is doing with it, because we get all that, we do get that monthly, we get that email, so it's not. So it, it is, I, I learned a lot of it being, being representative on that board. Unfortunately, I won't be able to make it to that June meeting, I'll be out of town, so I don't think it's a good time for someone else to take it.
Bass is currently negotiating with their union, and so that is going to be a really important meeting where Jeff Doherty, who is director of Bass, will be going through all their information for negotiations. And then the governing board is the one that actually votes and approves everything. If anybody's interested.
I'm going to excuse myself, since I've employed by Bass over the summers, so I'm going to. I mean, other than that, I'd be more than willing, that they employ me over the summers, I think that would be a conflict of interest.
I, I'll take it on again, but someone's going to need to go to that meeting in my place.
I just, um.
I don't, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll go on the 21st. It's just hard with me, I mean, with Dan and she, you know, and I will, unless Jane's.
I'm, I'm out of time in Texas, that'll be, I'm going to bail call it for a week.
Okay, so I will, I will do, is that something, okay, so.
I'm just, I'm going to make it easier, I'll, I'll be, I'll stay the representative, as long as you sub for me that day.
Okay, and then if there's another comment, I'll name this up for you, I will do that, is that, is that, can we do that?
When they take attendance, they just use, they just say the district, so you can just say.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. I'll forward you the email for that day. I'm volunteering. We do not need a motion. Okay. How old board correspondence is there?
There are none. There is none.
Are there any agenda items?
None.
We have a reason to go into closed session.
We do for personnel and for student discipline purposes.
Do I have a motion to go into closed session? So good. Mrs. Nail made a motion?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Morgan? All in favor?
Yes.
I need a roll call?
Mrs. Gray? Is there another reason to go, like, other student matters?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, other student matters, thank you.
So Mrs. Nail?
Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Dob?
Aye.
Mrs. Nail?
Aye.
Mr. Kiskin?
Aye.
Mr. Henning?
Aye.
Mr. Spanley?
Aye.
Mrs. Morgan?
Aye.
Motion passes, we are now in closed session.